Lewisburg Town Council. Good evening, council.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
And we'll begin tonight by having our roll call.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Councilman Dickerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stewart. Councilwoman Stein.
Here.
Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilman Clancy.
Here.
Councilman Russell.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wright, would you lead us in our invocation, please?
If you're able to stand, let's just say it. Most of the ever last year turn by, I have no doubt, but what's going to come to you thinking for another day? Thank you, Lord, for the sun, the rain. Thank you, Lord, for what you are doing in our lives and what you have yet to do. Thank you, Lord, for those that have come out this evening. Let us do things decently and in order and for the betterment of Lewisburg. Thank you, Lord, for everything you do and lead us, guide us, as we go through this meeting with understanding and why we are here. Thank you for everything and again, just through all your blessings, departments, and just saying my prayer. Amen.
Please believe us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for making this evening. Item number four on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda for tonight. Could I get a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second. It's been moved in property section that we adopt the agenda for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number five, the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
I make a motion we approved in the minutes from June meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved in property section that we approve the minutes from June meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Also, we had a closed regular meeting for June 19th, a closed session, and those minutes from that meeting. Should I get a motion for approval of those minutes?
Make a motion. Second.
It's been moved in property section that we approved the regular and closed session for the June 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number seven on our list, we have some individuals from Dynamic Digital Indoor Billboard who wish to come before us and they have some information they want to share with the board there and also the citizens at this time. I'd like to ask Mr. Bluff, would you come forward and share the information with us, please?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Hope you're doing well tonight. My name is Dennis Lee Bluff and my assistant is Reginald White. We've both worked with Dynamic Digital Indoor Billboards. I'm sure many of you have been into Johnny's Barbecue.
This is the button there.
There we go. I apologize there. Hopefully you were able to hear me the first time. If you've been in Johnny's Barbecue, if you've been at Pete Smith, if you've been at Sunrise Biscuit, you may have seen televisions that run various different ads, the local ads. Many of you might know a person by name of Jonathan Davis, who was the creator of Dynamic Digital. We're one of his people that work with him. We found this to be a really interesting situation for the town of Lewisburg. We have grown Dynamic Digital as he's passing out the information to you. We have over 340 locations around the state of North Carolina. So we're everywhere, literally, from Charlotte to Boone to areas Asheville, all the way to the coast. We have over 10 to 11 screens here in Lewisburg alone. We thought it would be really cool for you guys, for the town, city of Lewisburg, to be able to have advertisements about what you do in town. A lot of people go to gyms that are here, a lot of people eat in a lot of these places. They look at our screens, they view what's going on in the community. And what better way to be able to share what's happening in the community than with our indoor digital billboards? And again, what I've seen, this is very cost effective. 10 screens for us is like a $300 a month situation. I've been in radio, that I've done for Radio 1 Capital Broadcasting for over 30 years. So I know radio, television is extremely expensive. This is about a tenth of what you would do to advertise on a large scale. But it's right in your backyard, it's right with your citizens, and it's able for you to accomplish whatever you need done. And the good thing about it is we're able to rotate information. So if you come to us and you say, "Look, we need to change this graphic out. We have new information that you need to dispel out." We can get that to you in a timely fashion to those locations. And that's pretty much about it of what we do and what we serve. Is there any questions that the council has for us?
I have a couple.
Please.
You're proposing we, as a town, put advertising, advertised, but it's not an actual physical device, in the town.
No, not an actual physical, it will be in the actual, you would tell us what you would like. We have graphic designers that we have on staff. So we can do that. You can also supply information to us. We do have a size recommendation so that it fits right with our screens. But we actually put it on the screen for anything, any information that you desire on there.
And in your 300-plus locations throughout the state, do you have any other municipalities that participate?
Our main ones are participating in this towards our west, so mainly the Boone and Asheville are participating in that. We're just now talking more with municipalities with it. The biggest one probably would be Wilmington, because Jonathan is located in Wilmington. We actually work with one of the large festivals out there. We work directly with the city of Wilmington in as far as that's regarded with us. That's probably our biggest one that we have, and that's what made us think, well, we need to look at our other municipalities as well.
Thank you.
Now, would these advertisements appear locally as well?
Yes, so this would be, this is really primarily for the 10 screens that you have here in Lewisburg. This is where that would be. But this also creates another opportunity for you, because we happen to be in areas west and areas east of the state. You could begin showcasing what is here in Lewisburg to people that vacation in the coast, that vacation to the mountains, since we're there. So that is an opportunity to showcase, you know, this place just north of Raleigh and what a great place it is to go ahead and stop and enjoy and relax and have fun. So I see two possible opportunities for you, not just locally, but beyond statewide as well.
Any other questions from the council?
Mayor, is this something that we budgeted for this year?
Not for this, no, I am not for this.
Thank you.
And again, if anything, we want to be able to make a presentation to you. And something that you can look at and discuss, know that's a possibility. Lewisburg is one of the cities that is growing with, in fact, with everything between Raleigh and Durham and everything in between. And this is a great place and a great city. And it'd be great for people to know more about it. We have found out in our experience that this is a really good vehicle and an inexpensive vehicle that can do the same thing without paying a high price in social media and television and radio with that.
Sir, I have a question. So it's $300 a month to put up the advertisement, what is the fee for you to put the advertisement together?
Nothing. Either you can supply the graphics to us, or just apply us the information and we do the graphics. And this is that 300 is just for 10 screens, it can go beyond that. So I'm saying for 10 screens because it's 10 screens here that we have in Lewisburg. But if you wanted, or you're able to budget more and say you want to do additional screens in Asheville, or you want to do additional screens in Wilmington to showcase of where you're located here, that goes beyond that 300. Because again, we have 340 and we're still growing in the state.
And that's 300 a month?
Yes.
Any other questions from the council? No, Mr. Bluff, I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Item number eight, public hearing for zoning map or amendment for the Lewisburg Falls. Could I get a motion to go into public hearing for Lewisburg Falls?
I make a motion for a public hearing.
A second motion.
It's been moved in property section that we go into a public hearing for zoning amendment for Lewisburg Falls. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now turn this over to Mr. Slate.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight is an amendment that has gone through the planning board to change the land use map as well as the uses and a few additional items, street standards, setbacks for the Lewisburg Falls project. You may recall, there was a previous amendment that came before the board that was denied. That was back in May. After some reflection, the developer has returned in order to amend or to make another attempt at addressing some of the concerns that were expressed by council at the time. As you've heard me say on multiple occasions with this project, there is a floor and a ceiling. And so the floor already exists. Last year, we had approved, or maybe even further back, I can't right off the top of my head say, but we had approved the rezoning for Lewisburg Falls a while back. So there is something in place right now. That was around 290 units, some 300,000 square foot of non-residential space. So the amendment would be the cap, where the developer is going to propose some 400-plus, 490-plus units, which is a mix of townhomes and apartments, and then expand the residential, the non-residential footprint from previously proposed, which was 32,000 square feet, to now 66,000 plus. I will let the developer go into more details as to how that will be presented and in what form it will take. That's the gist of it. As I indicated, the planning board on June 8th listened to the case. It was voted three to one with one member accusing themselves. So the recommendation that went forward was for approval. That's really all the comments I have at this point. If you want to recognize the developer and let them explain the proposal, some of the more finer points, other than questions you may have. It's, oh, sorry.
Any questions? Phil.
Mr. Van Lu, and Mr. Scott Murray is here along with his team.
Okay, Mr. Van Lu, how are you this evening, too?
Hello, everyone. It's always a pleasure to see you. Mayor Neal. Councilman Russell, Councilman Clancy, Councilwoman Wright, Councilwoman Stein, good to see you. Councilman Dickerson. Mrs. Perry, Sean, good to see you. Yet, you know, we really took your suggestions and comments last night to heart. You know, figured out how we can bring more value and get in a more line with the 2030 master plan and the highest investments and put pencil to paper, we have another presentation for you tonight. Brought along Scott Murray Planning and Weatherall, Weatherall does all the engineering and traffic. And that's where we're at today, so I'd like to turn the floor over to them and present our new amendment and see what you think. Thank you.
I think we're going to ask Larry Green and Jordan to maybe hold these up high, see if it's not blocking. As far as Larry. And everyone soon. People in this project probably don't have.
This was the, we had proposed last time, and it was a transition to allow more residential in this area. And we were very loud and clear that that was a concern. The vision for the Highway 401 entranceway, oh, that, Councilman Dickerson. But the vision was to maintain a more active commercial streetscape, if you will.
So, may I have you just speak a little bit louder?
Okay, oh, sorry. And I don't know if Larry, you can point out, the amendment last time proposed more residential and it concentrated some townhome units there at the corner of Fox Park and 401. And what we heard loud and clear was that the vision was to keep a more active commercial sort of streetscape in that area. And so we, after hearing you, we went back to the drawing board and the master plan, if you could rotate a little bit, Jordan, so, Councilman Dickerson. That area in particular, the frontage along 401 in its entire length and also Fox Park Road is now shown with a commercial storefront streetscape. We have included residential above that. We set a perspective of what that might look like at the corner, which could be a four-story building. Otherwise, it might be three stories. And they could be, you know, units that are two stories tall over a live-work unit or some type of other commercial activity. Or they could be flats, condo flats, if you will. So I think that addresses, hopefully addresses, the concerns that we have, that we heard about the loss and the reduction of the commercial area, particularly how it activated the street frontage coming into town. I'm happy to address any other details or questions you might have. Larry is our traffic expert and Jordan is our engineer expert, so please feel free to direct any questions to him as well.
So does this change a traffic problem? Does this create more or less of a traffic problem at all?
It actually generates less traffic than when it was originally approved.
That one we can turn around. That is not the one being presented tonight, I didn't want to confuse anyone. I think the same holds true for this, is that?
That's what I was pointing to, yes.
Okay.
It generates less than this one.
So I'll take note that on the new plan, originally, there was plans to include a small firehouse on the main interior road, and which is now gone and gone to perhaps a mixed use or a commercial in which, although we appreciate the fact that you tried to include a small fire station, when you build buildings that are 12 to 15 million dollars, you try to do it where you have adequate land for growth and... But I think that this would be a better use of that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilwoman Stein. That is more representative of an infill urban, and it does not allow the expansion that you just described. So we've converted it to a mixed-use building that would have commercial street fronts on it as well.
I see on this new revised plan, the main intersection on 401.
Yes, sir.
Has that been taken care of as far as, is that a done deal? Mr. Van Lu, just a second.
Yes, so we are simplifying it, we're working out an exchange right now, but Mr. Friedman came to New York City a couple of weeks ago and we're continuously, as I'm down here today, I'll be seeing him on Wednesday, so it's very close, but it's pretty much a done deal. It just takes time. You can't force lawyers. There was a vacation, you know, time that everybody was away for a few weeks and just have to be patient, so, but it's this close. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That commercial, if I'm looking at this correctly, and if I'm not, please correct me. The commercial doesn't all the way across, I want to get to the up, is that correct?
Yes, the blue is shown as commercial.
Right.
The buildings L1, 2, and 3, and the internal buildings could also have that commercial frontage. We'd like to bring residential down to the street in the backside so that it has an upper entrance. Definitely a street, a commercial street frontage on the main street.
And how many rooftops are we talking about now?
Maximum will be 498, 170 townhomes and 348 condos, apartments, multifamily.
Any questions?
Mr. Murray, and Mr. Van Lu, thanks for bringing us back to the town. We appreciate that. I know that you're invested here, you're invested in this project, and we appreciate that. I think that the public will appreciate the fact that it's not all homes and that we may have the opportunities for some commerce to come to town. If approval happens, what's the next step and what is our timeline going, what happens next?
Thank you very much, because, you know, we felt the same way, you know, we just wanted to figure it out. Sometimes it takes a couple extra iterations, you know. The timeline is we're going to close by the end of the year. That's, I basically have to the end of the year. And the game plan right now is that we're working towards putting the debt in place. That's like the construction financing to start, just the first phase. And that's basically that back area there, that's 37 townhomes. And also, the idea would be to clear and do building A on the corner to kind of light the place up a little bit. That's the game plan. But, and part of phase one also includes the storm water down at the bottom because the first thing you have to do, just being a professional engineer, I'm very conscious to making sure we take care of the soil erosion and everything. So we're almost like working from the low point up, getting the catch basin so we can control the water and then delivering the first phase.
So by early next year, we might see?
That's the game plan, yeah. It's probably a good six months of like just site work, you know, before you get all the utilities in. And then there's a lot of factors we can't control these days, you know. Utility companies are backed up and, you know, so we're learning more patience these days.
Thank you.
The storm part here, is that, would that be fenced in or would there be any type of recreational use centered around there? Or is that, what is?
I also wanted to recommend for stormwater and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, sometimes I like act like I'm a civil engineer again. But it's maintained that there's actually a service ability around the top for a vehicle to get around. It's open, where people can enjoy the view. The intention there is to create some type of falls with some stone that's there, so when you're playing pickleball, you can kind of get a good view. That's what the game plan is.
Any questions from the, from the audience?
I just had a question from Mr. Slater. Should comments be able to, after the public hearing, or can it be made now?
Comments, meaning?
General comments instead of questions.
Well, this is the opportunity, if council can ask questions, but it's also, you know, the public, this is an opportunity for the public. If council has questions, I would urge you to do it on the adoption item nine, because what you'll do is you'll make a motion to approve and then discuss and debate, and during that debate is when you ask.
I just had a question.
Okay, any questions from the, from the audience?
The only question that has moved, could you come in to me, right?
Sir, could I ask you to?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
An address?
I'm Reginald White, and I live on. Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Now, I am not a quote-unquote city resident, but I am a Lewisburg resident. I'm from Dyking Road. And the question I have, even if this was the commissioners' meeting, it would probably be the same. When you, so when you mentioned commerce, what type of commerce would be in that district?
We have listed a, you know, list of permitted uses that was previously approved in the government document. And there's also several uses, we call them objectionable kind of uses, that are also listed that would not be allowed in there. And I think that's where you would find that information.
Okay.
Any other questions from the audience? Not a big one, thanks to the council, any more questions from the council? Thank you, right here. We move the item B on the minority outreach plan. Mr. Carden?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Before you tonight, later on tonight, actually, is what for approval is the purchasing policy. And a part of that purchasing policy is the minority outreach plan. And in that outreach, we set a minority business participation goal of 10% for building, construction, and repair contracts. And because of that participation goal, we're required by state to hold a public hearing for the 10% goal. And I guess, open a public hearing for minority participation? I guess we need a motion to?
Sir, are we already in public hearing?
Yeah, we're still in public. Now, you said this, this minority outreach plan, is this for, like, for instance, in businesses and things that we are?
Right. The state statutes specifically say for the participation goal of 10% that we need to hold a public hearing before we're approved of. And that's the, that's the main purpose of this public hearing.
Mr. Carden, how long has this been in place as law?
This law was, it was passed, I think, 2001 or 2002.
So how have we been able to not have this plan in place all this time?
I can't speak to that. It's something that we should have in place. And, you know, as me coming in January 30th, I'm, you know, when I've come across some things that I haven't seen put in place, I've, you know, I've tried to correct the situation.
Sean, can you shine a light on this as far as how we've been able to not have any plan like this in place?
I don't think, Mr. Clancy, that it can delight until we receive our defense. I was not ready to say it here, folks. Which I came over in 2008, so if it came in adoption in 2001, I don't know how.
Isn't this something that should have been picked up on audits? I mean, for sure, we've awarded contracts in the last 20 years.
Maybe. It is difficult because the auditors don't check everything. I don't want to say yes or no, but it is one of the things that we should have in place. So if you look at the resolution, it was North Carolina General Assembly and that in session law 2001-496, so it was around. law, two thousand, two thousand one dash four nine six, so it was around the time when the law was passed.
Mr. Carter, is the ten percent a general, what they generally recommend?
Yes, and it is in the statutes that the ten, the state has a ten percent goal for minority participation. So the going, the consensus is each municipality and county, you know, basically pass the same rate. They, they have a goal of ten percent. So the reason for this is the state has its own goal of ten percent minority participation.
So have we had any minority to apply in previous years?
It's common, it's common, I, I can't speak on Lewisburg project, but it's common that contractors, when we hire contractors to, for build construction, that they go out, they're aware of this requirement, and they go out and subcontract to minority businesses. And, you know, usually they do get the ten percent goal.
Okay. Being that, I think we're on the path with growth coming forward, I think having this, if we didn't have it in the past for whatever reason, I think it would be good now to put this in place for it to go on record. And as we proceed with future projects, it would already be on record that the town of Lewisburg has to look, will abide by this ordinance, will be documented. So I think it would be a good thing for us if we did, if we could, to make arrangements too good in the end. Any other questions? I apologize, we're having some issues with this mic. Again, just remind the council to be aware of that and just make sure the little green light is on your, on your, on your mic so you can hear. Any other questions from Mr. Carter, from the audience? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? If not, could I entertain a motion to close a public hearing? Remove the property second, if you'd close our public hearing section. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay, item, item number nine on the agenda, the adoption of the ordinance amending the zoning map for Lewisburg Falls. Again, citizens, I apologize for our audio for tonight. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, if you'll note on page seven, which I'm going to give you a revised version, there was a typo made for the purposes of record. I wanted to recollect that what was originally sent out of your packet identified the parcel as Franklin County Tax Parcel 107199, that is incorrect. The correct parcel ID number is 017199. So I'm going to give you a revised, proposed motion, so that when it's read into the record, it properly reflects what the parcel ID number actually is. That's written on my head.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Now, could I get a motion for the adoption of the ordinance?
I have a comment first.
Sure.
Directed toward Mr. Van Lu. At our last meeting that you were here at, I will say, four of us, myself, Mr. Plancy, Mr. Dickerson, and Miss Stein rejected the last proposal. And that was not because we didn't believe in the, in the project we, we do. The first plan was our favorite. I don't want to speak for, for them, but it was definitely mine. And I want to thank you for listening to our comments. And going back to the drawing board, because we feel that business and commerce is not only important to the community, to the people, the surrounding areas to come in and have a place to eat and enjoy themselves. And I think the new plan shows what compromised us. From what we've presented to you and what your team did, I, I think is commendable. And I do appreciate that, and you're a businessman, you're not one to just, it's my way or the highway. You, you do understand that this was a vision that you have and that we want to see come to fruition. So, thank you, thank your team. We appreciate it.
You know, thank you so much. It took years of, I think, being with the same woman for forty years and raising her kids, and, you know, getting some patience and learning that North Carolina is a little different than New York City. You know, just, it gave me an opportunity, I was able to grow and really get a lot of fulfillment out of the process, and really excited about moving forward, so I can't tell you how much I appreciate some of the comments that I've heard today from a few of you already, so thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, if not, could we entertain a motion for the adoption of this ordinance amending the zoning map for Lewisburg Falls?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the request that the amendment to the planning development district map for Lewisburg Falls, as identified by Franklin County Tax Number 017199, be approved, given the findings for this request are consistent with the 2030 Lewisburg comprehensive plan and show to be in the public's interest as the amendment more accurately reflects the town's housing and economic needs, and is to be found reasonable, as this will result in a more logical progression in the development of the gateway into Lewisburg. As a matter of the record, the following motion was given to the town council, July seventh.
I second.
Okay, it's been the move the property second, that we accept the ordinance amending the Lewisburg zoning map for Lewisburg Falls. All in favor by show of hands? All opposed? The Lewisburg measure has passed. Thank you, and I too would like to thank you, Mr. Van Lu, and your team as well, and piggybacking on what Councilman Russell has said, we appreciate your work, and we know that going forward, you will be able to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to say I'm excited, because you're, you're a pilot, right?
Say again?
You're a pilot, and thank you. So I was just learning about the airport, there's a hundred fifty people on the waiting list over there just looking for slots, so it's going to be a popular place in Lewisburg, so I'm excited, and thank you once again.
Thank you.
Okay, item number ten on the agenda, the adoption of the resolution of the Minority Outreach Plan, establishing a ten percent participation goal for purchasing policy. Yes, this is the motion to adopt that resolution.
I make motion to adopt the resolution for the Minority Outreach Plan, for the ten percent statute.
I second.
It's been moved and property second, that we adopt the resolution for the minority?
I have a question.
Sure.
It looks like two separate resolutions in our package.
Yes, I, I, I wanted to bring that up. I mean, you could?
Okay, go ahead. Yes, sir.
You can separate them, and I, I would recommend, because the Minority Outreach Plan and Purchasing Policy are interconnected, you know, it's hard to split them up, so I suggest that you pass the Minority Outreach Plan, establishing a ten percent participation goal and the purchasing policy at the same time. And there's two resolutions, but you can pass them at the same time.
They piggyback.
So she just needs to read the other resolution?
And the purchasing policy?
Yeah, that, that would be, just add, just add that to it.
Okay. I move to adopt the resolution for the Minority Outreach Plan, establish a ten percent participation goal and a purchasing policy.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved the property second, that we adopt the resolution of the Minority Outreach Plan, establishing the ten percent participation goal and purchasing policy. All in favor? All opposed? Item number eleven, the adoption of the resolution for a loan grant offer for Green Hill Pump Station replacement project. Mr. Slater?
In your packet, on page forty-two, it's a short summary, but in effect, this is permission to request funds in the form of a loan, as well as grant, to replace the Green Hill lift station, which was installed back in the nineteen nineties. It's long exceeded its life cycle, and particularly in light of the development that's occurring at Green Hill, it adds to the need of, of being replaced. This has long since been planned, this is nothing out of the blue. Long before I got here, Mr. Medlin took office as the town administrator, this has always been in the works, it just has taken us a while to get the mechanics in place and all that other stuff. So, again, the total project cost is about a little over a million dollars, half will be loan, half will be grant, so.
Any questions for Mr. Slater?
Mr. Slater, what's the life expectancy of one's patients?
I, yeah, it's generally about fifteen, fifteen to twenty years now, currently.
While we're talking about Green Hill, is there any update on the, how that's progressing over there?
Yes. So I just got through approving the final plats for Phase One A and One B, which collectively brings us, not quite, but close to around thirty-five lots. The water, sewer, roads, and electric, the electric is not quite finished, but we're like very, very close. And so that will position the developer to now begin building houses, selling lots, all that kind of stuff. So you should actually see things going vertical really soon.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, could I get a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Remove the property second, that we adopt a resolution for a loan grant offer for the Green Hill Pump Station replacement project. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number twelve, adoption of a resolution awarding the contract for ground maintenance of the town cemeteries. I believe there were cemeteries, for the record, there's Cemetery on the Hill, as well as the Oakwood Cemetery. Mr. Slater?
Yes, sir. So the town had issued a request for proposal some time back to solicit quotes for the ground maintenance of both cemeteries in an attempt to try to get them in better condition. Historically, the town has perhaps not been equal in treatment and providing the level of maintenance that was desirable. And so in an attempt to try to realign the progress that we've made, we've tried to increase maintenance of both sites, we have gone in, cleared trees, grubbed a number of areas, we've gotten a, some management software to help us with actual cemetery management, and so all of this is a broader package to try to better manage both cemeteries. And so with the RFP, we got one responsive bidder coming back. That was, as I believe I noted, best funeral service contractors, in the amount of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. That contract would cover both, both locations, and would not only include ground maintenance, but also weed killing, that kinds of things. And that's a, oh, an annual contract, subject to review.
All right, any questions for Mr. Slater?
Mr. Slater, in the last few months, we've put a lot of notices out in the newspaper, social media, internet, verbally, letting people know that if they have flowers that have deteriorated or things that are an obstacle for the mowing, that they need to come and get those removed to make the maintenance for our cemeteries easier, so that they can be properly maintained. Do you know how that, do you have an update as to if most of the items have been cleared, or?
I believe we still have some issues to overcome there, but we're hoping to have that rectified by the time the contractor is put into place. So if the action taken tonight is to approve this, then Mr. Medlin, then we'll proceed with getting the contract signed, and then town staff will accelerate their efforts to try to get it in shape, so that when we turn it over to the contractor, that should be taken care of. You know, there were several things that we had to be a little bit sensitive to, Memorial Day, we had to put out flags and give, we've actually reached out to a number of families to make sure, we gave them adequate time to pull their personal effects, it's a very sensitive issue, as you might guess, and so we're trying to do this in a thoughtful way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, could I get a motion to approve?
Certainly.
A second.
Remove the property second, that we adopt a resolution awarding the contract for ground maintenance for the town cemeteries. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item thirteen, now this is for information only, and this is a summary of the public forum regarding food trucks. Mr. Slater?
Just very briefly, as you may recall, following the motion, following the council meeting, where council reestablished the, the locations that were eligible under the old ordinance, part of that motion was also to have a public input session, which was held on the eleventh. Councilmember Stein and Mayor Neal were present, and allowed the public their opportunity to voice their views on the regulations as presented. There were also a series of emails which I received, which is included in your packet. Those are not verbatim minutes, those are summary minutes, but we tried to be as considerate and detailed as possible, trying to capture the gist of what we heard. It was well attended, I thought, and so it'll be up to council to decide how to dispose of those, those comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item number fourteen, a function of tax collector for the town of Lewisburg. Mr. Carter?
All right, on the agenda tonight is a resolution to appoint the Franklin County Tax Administrator, I'm sorry, is to approve a resolution directing, directing the Franklin County Tax Administrator to collect taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the town of Lewisburg.
Background, the town of Lewisburg currently has an interlocal agreement with Franklin County which directs the county to bill and collect property taxes on behalf of the town at the request of the Franklin County Tax Administrator and to ensure that we are in compliance with North Carolina General Statute one hundred and five dash three four nine. The town of Lewisburg must formally appoint a tax collector for the fiscal year. And this resolution is to accomplish that. I'm looking for a motion or any questions.
Mr. Carter, would that person be a staff person, a partner, or?
We are appointing the Franklin County Tax Administrator to collect taxes. This is, they've done it every year, but the new, I think the new tax administrator would like us to formally, formally appoint them with a resolution.
Any other questions from the council? Tonight, could we get a motion for approval of that?
I make a motion to approve.
It's removed in property second that we get to appoint a tax collector for the town of Lewisburg, as indicated by Mr. Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item fifteen, capital project ordinance amendment for the North Main Street Sidewalk Project. Mr. Carter?
Before you tonight is capital project ordinance amendment for the North Main Street Sidewalk Project. Some background, after the South Main Street Sidewalk Project was completed, the North Carolina Department of Transportation allowed the town to roll over the unexpended funds into the current North Main Street Sidewalk Project. Additionally, NC DOT is allowed to transfer a portion of the funds available for the West River Road Sidewalk Project into the North Main Street Project. The amount of NC DOT funding now totals six hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars with a town contribution of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars for a total project cost of eight hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Future amendments to the project may be needed as the right away acquisition phase proceeds and when the construction phase commences. So tonight, I'm looking for a motion to approve the ordinance. And the ordinance breaks down the new amounts there on the right column.
Hey, any questions for the council?
Yeah, so that means you'll finish all of the building on South Main for sidewalks?
That, that's right, that's correct, yes.
You did all that, this is South Main, Bunnery is a different project. Bunnery is a different project. Okay, so you're not going on the opposite side of South Main? I know we did it all the way up on the side, it just went south.
Any other questions?
Ruben, the town contribution of one hundred ninety-seven, two twenty-four, is that money that we have already contributed or something that we have budgeted for to contribute?
We, we spent, I would say more than fifty percent of that already. I can't give you the exact number off the top of my head, but I would say greater than fifty percent of that we've already spent.
Do you have a timeline on that? That project?
I know, I know Philip Slater has been in contact with Carter and NC DOT, I don't know if he has a.
He, he's already left, but what we're doing, where the process is, is we're actually in right away now. So we're acquiring what we need to do on this project.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the sidewalk project.
Certainly.
It's removed in property second that we approve the capital project ordinance amendment for the North Main Street Sidewalk Project. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number sixteen, on the project administrative board. Mr. Medlin?
Mayor of Town Council, thank you. Tonight, in front of you is the administrative report. Your attached, attached to you will find your May financials. For the Lewisburg ABC Store, finance staff is working to close out fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We'll get those to you when that's closed out. Debids related to the solid waste have been received and staff is reviewing. Follow-up with council to let you know the results. I will let you know it looks pretty favorable at this point. The town has hired an IT Director, James Harris, will start with the town on August the seventh, twenty twenty-three. Interviews are underway with regard to the following open positions in the street department, superintendent, and part-time human resources officers. All approved positions have been posted. Friday nights on the tar will be this Friday night, beginning at six-thirty. The break time band will be the performing artist at this concert and the food truck vendors will be Caribbean Kicker Warehouse Barbecue and Frost Spikes. And lastly, the Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a photo competition for Parks and Recreation Month. Any individual may go to any of the town's parks, take their favorite photo and submit it to Andrew Smith, Parks and Rec Director. His email can be found here in the packet on the website to be entered into the drawing and feel free to follow Parks and Rec via social media on Instagram and Facebook.
Okay, thank you, Sean. The next is mayor's report, my report. Couple of things I did in the last meeting there. Councilwoman Stewart and I, and I attended the council of government meeting in Henderson. They had a discussion on, which we found very interesting, the project four oh one coming down. And I don't know if you traveled that lately. They had a scheduled date of fully opening that the last of this month. If you've drove it lately, you've seen that some of the cones now are being taken away. There's fewer cones now than it was a month ago. And as we understand from the council development, four oh one will be opened by the end of this month. The second thing I did, since it's been very hot recently, I was working with a project in which we delivered fans to senior citizens. Those of senior citizens who did not have means of air conditioning or had a window unit in the home. We worked to deliver fans for that. So I delivered about ten fans to seniors in the area around town in Lewisburg. So I found that to be a very rewarding situation as well. And the citizens were very appreciative. And also just, just encourage some of the councils in some of your spare time, visit a senior. They will be glad to see you as you come and knowing that you are representative of the town as well. So that shows that they will be very appreciative of that. Thank you. That's my report. Okay, item number eighteen, the police and fire report. Chief Allen, could I say something?
Evening, Mayor, Councilman. This is the July report from the police department. There were no employee actions or recognitions for the month. Number two is recruiting and retention. Officer Lamont Burciut resigned from the department Friday, July the fourteenth, to take a position with the Grand County Sheriff's Department. Lamont served honorably with us for over five years as a patrol officer. I want to publicly thank him for his service to the town. We wish him the best and he's doing that. Pleased to announce that we had a part-time officer waiting in the wing to step in and fill a full-time position. That took place on July fifteenth, very next day. So Officer Andy Castaneda, who left us for, back in last February to go to a part-time status with us, has also been serving as a school resource officer at Cross Creek Charter School. He is back with us full-time in the patrol. So we were able to make a seamless transition without a single day loss or any kind of staffing shortage or any kind of training or orientation process. We can just step right in the role and keep running. That was good. Number three is the community tip for the month. With summer in full swing, officers are responding to a number of foster services involving animals and pets being left in unattended cars. We treat these calls pretty seriously. It usually leads to an individual being charged with some sort of animal cruelty charge. The Humane Society suggests that leaving a pet in a locked car, unattended cars never safe, but it's particularly dangerous in this time of year. Couple of things to remember. If it's seventy-two degrees outside, it can reach up to one hundred and sixteen degrees within your car, within and out. If it's eighty degrees outside, it can reach ninety-nine degrees within ten minutes. And rolling down the windows only has a slight effect. So we just ask that the public remember, please don't leave your, your pet in your vehicle. Something could happen to your pet or you could end up in court spending hundreds of dollars trying to pay the fine. We just ask that you know that. Again, number four is complaints against officers and filings that were none for the month. Number five, use of force, vehicle pursuits, that were none for the month. Number six is operation and local investigations. There's a list in your packet, I'm not going to cover each one of those unless there are any specific questions. Number seven is the budget summary. We closed out fiscal year at the end of June with ninety-four point four percent, which came in the budget, which was a little surprising to me since we hadn't come back to you for a couple of budget amendments, although I think we're just moving money within our budget, but I'm pleased to announce we're ready to come in the budget for the year. Also, the repairs to the police station are finally complete. We have moved operations back into the police station now and we're out of the training center. So I'm sure the fire department and my guys as well are on active track. Department training summary number eight. We receive training in the following areas. RMS CAD and crime recording, which is basically our system for recording. Arson investigations, death investigations, and body camera and taser implementation. Number nine is community outreach and special events. We're planning for the Friday nights on the tar event coming up Friday, this Friday. And on July the third, we assisted the county with its Independence Fire Week celebration at Lewisburg United High School. Special request is the number of citations printed for the month of June was one hundred and fifteen and the other stats are in your packet.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. Is, isn't it town ordinance to park in a fire lane?
Yes.
Is that something that we issue tickets for?
Yes, we have.
We have. I, I've noticed that when I go to a lot of the local establishments, sometimes it's a problem that people are parking illegally in front of these facilities, but I just didn't know if it was something that people could be issued a citation for. It's very serious. I was somewhere a few weeks ago and the paramedics could not get into the building because it was blocked. So people should take note of that. They should not be parking there.
Yes.
Quick question regarding new, new old officer? Officer Castaneda?
Yes.
When he stepped in, is he just going in until you find another full-time or is he going to stay with us for?
No, he's full-time now. I approached him about it as soon as we found out that Officer Chip was leaving and he was interested in stepping back into a full-time position. So it worked out for both of them.
And is another officer going to take over for the SRO for Cross Creek?
We hope to find somebody. We're searching after that position. Again, that's a part-time position.
Was I was having trouble here?
Sure.
I like the new format.
On your report.
Okay, good. Sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. The next is the fire department, you said a representative to like to present something on behalf of the fire department tonight.
Chief Lemon had an emergency with his dad. He had surgery this afternoon, so he's at the hospital. So I have none of our information that's in your packets. So, but like I said, he's at the hospital with his dad at the time.
Okay. Thank you, we wish him well.
Thank you.
And you do have the, the fire department report in our packet?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Okay. Item number nineteen, public comment. Is this the time where we allow you citizens?
Thirty minutes.
To share, make a comment if you may have, any concerns that you may have if you would like to adjust the town. Any, anyone have any public comments?
If I can get out. Good afternoon. Council. Been trying to get a drainage clean. Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Ernest Thomas, I stay at three oh four South Bickett Boulevard. Okay, I have a problem trying to get a drainage cleaned out on Hill Street. And I haven't been over here twice and it still ain't got cleaned out. And another thing is I want to know, I went home to ask the council. I stay, I stay on Boulevard, but behind me is Avon Street. And I'd like to see if we can get some gravel off, pull that pad down a little bit. The city, I mean the town owns it. So I was asking for that tonight, to see if y'all would do it. But I do want that drainage cleaned out.
Mr. Hill, what's the, I mean, Mr. Thomas, let's see, just.
On Hill Street, it's time you turn off, uh, Hill Street is right there on the side of the, I mean, no, hold on, I'm sorry, off the Boulevard.
Uh, turning off the Boulevard on Hill Street.
Right over there by Dale Place Station, right across the street from there.
Thank you.
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Beverly Keckley, one twenty Jolly Street, Lewisburg. I don't know how many of you have seen, we did send them invitations for Saturday's event at the Lewisburg College JPAC. It is the premiere of a film that has been in the making for a little over a year in Franklin County. And the topic is homelessness and affordable housing. The name of the film is Give Me Shelter. There are quite a few people from the county that talk about their thoughts, their feelings, and most of all, their experiences with homelessness or the lack thereof of affordable housing, which I see it every day. If you all don't, maybe I should start sending the people that I see in my office down here because it's daily, it's getting worse. We're going to have to deal with it in some form or fashion. And we as nonprofits can help, we're willing to help. But we have to have government input from the towns. And it would be really nice to get it from the county, but that's another matter, another night and another meeting. But I do encourage you, if you aren't doing anything else on Saturday afternoon, the doors open at two, the film starts at three. The dresses come in whatever you want to come in. There will be people dressed up. There will be people in their T-shirts of the different organizations they represent. So, you know, if we're starting, the film we are, we already know is going to go other places. We will be entering it into several film festivals and we were just invited to bring it to Kentucky. So homelessness exists everywhere and the lack of affordable housing. But we need to do something and we need to do it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Natalie Peterson, two oh eight Wyler Street. And talking about Lewisburg Falls, I'm just wondering, do we have any kind of revitalization for our town and the buildings we already have? And any incentive for the owners to fix them up or for somebody to bring a business into them?
Well, just, we, we don't usually follow up, but we can follow up and ask you to come down to our, to office there and I could, we could share more information to you. We do have what is called a twenty thirty plan. And in that plan, it talks about our revitalization efforts beginning now and what it will look like in twenty thirty. And perhaps as you view that packet, you may find answers to some of your questions there as are listed to the business.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Adrienne Woodin, I'm at 130 Torre Strangeroe. I wrote down my thoughts, you're going to just comment out with it. Tonight, I come before you as a downtown business owner and a concerned citizen. I worry for people walking back and forth on our downtown streets. The speed limit is appropriate, but it also needs to be reminded to those passing through, and even to those who come down here every day. What would it take to get a few extra speed limit signs? What about the crosswalks? If this isn't in the budget for the town, would a fundraiser help? Do we ask the DOT? With more growth in the downtown business district, we should also remember that there are dangers to those trying to cross the street. The parking on the streets along Nash and North Main often obstructs those trying to cross from view, and also obstruct the potentially fast-moving cars from the pedestrians. I strongly feel that adding two to three official crosswalks on Nash Street and adding one between the two courthouses will help downtown become a safer place for people to stroll through. Anyone who has attempted to use the crosswalk on North Main Street knows the potential dangers of drivers not paying attention. I own the small business on North Main Street right by that lone crosswalk. From my personal experience and watching others use it, I feel confident in telling you that crosswalk means absolutely nothing to the majority of cars passing through. I pulled my own teenager back to avoid being hit by a car on this crosswalk. NC law states, where traffic control signals are not in place or in operation, the driver of a vehicle shall yield the right of way to a pedestrian crossing the roadway within any marked crosswalk or within any unmarked crosswalk at or near an intersection. There are no signs at that crosswalk that it is a law or that people need to yield. I also strongly feel that adding signs to remind drivers of the law when approaching a crosswalk has the potential to save a life. If the grocery stores and fast food restaurants in this town and other places can add signs in their parking lots, we can do it too. Each time there is an event downtown and barricades are in use, we feel safe walking the street without the worry of being hit by a car. As soon as the police move those barricades, the cars are almost instantly flying down North Main Street again. I find myself reminding stragglers and random children to be careful. Just because there has not been an incident so far does not mean that we should wait to act. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll move on to item 20, council comments. Councilman Dickerson, anything you'd like to share?
Mayor, um, no, I don't have anything this evening, except again, thanks to all for being here and coming to our meetings, and I'm personally, I'm glad the Lewisburg Falls Project is moving forward, so thank you again for your patience.
Thank you. I noted here in the fire report that Lieutenant Rowe, Lieutenant Woodley, and Lieutenant Womack, Womack, both, all of them received new fire certificates, and I thank you because I know that's a lot of extra work and effort on y'all's part, I appreciate that. Personal note, happy belated birthday to Sean Medlin.
Thank you.
That was last week, we didn't see him. I hope to see y'all on Friday night on the Tar. But I have a question, Mr. Medlin, too. Is there any report on where our audit's at?
We actually were in contact, and we were making shit more like today. We were in contact with them last week, and they're steadily working on it, as we've been told.
And then, I noticed driving down through the, the Department of Transportation put tickers down on counters on a lot of our roads. Do you know what that's about?
I know DOT was down today, but I'm not for sure. They were over here looking at a intersection at Johnson and South Main, so I don't know if they put out tickers, but I can imagine.
What's going on there?
So they are actually putting in some medians, but they will not be accessible for cars to go through, but they'll be accessible for firefighters and C vehicles to go through.
On Johnson?
On, just on Johnson, on this end, on Johnson right here, by the courthouse, in between the courthouse and the T.O. Anderson's building.
So that road will no longer be accessible?
Yes, DOT is closing that.
Okay.
And it's going to be probably November, I think, December before they do, that's what they're doing this right now. So when I get more clarity, I'm bringing it to you, that's why I'm hoping to, if I have any clarity.
Well, I just wonder what it's like.
And I'm not for sure, they may, they may be willing to put those out, just to see what.
Good enough.
All right, Councilman Wright.
I'm, I'm good, thanks.
I'm still thinking about closing the roof, that's real. No, I had nothing to say, I just, I just thank everyone for being here this evening, and I'm trying to stay in out of the heat, so I had my time limited outside going around visiting. I still do things in my community and stuff, I haven't been to any meetings this month. Thank you.
Councilman Clay.
No comment. Thank you.
Councilman Russell.
Son, Pity back on Bobby, thank everybody for their patience with Lewisburg Falls, sometimes holding out, get you a better product, in the end, to give them more businesses to come here, and get more people to come here. I think that's a good thing. I want to thank everybody for coming out, our employees that are here, thank you. I like seeing y'all here, you're important to our community, we do appreciate that, and hope to see y'all next month. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Russell, and item 21, can we get a motion to adjourn? Remove the property second, that we adjourn tonight's meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Again, thank you, citizens, for coming on.